Before I talk about those changes, I want to talk about where we are in the charter process and where we go from here. So, we've already had our first reading, obviously. Second reading's today on July 7th. We will have a vote on the charter commission issue. Questions will be for us, just on that question I described for you. Should we have a charter commission put to the ballot? Just because we say yes doesn't mean it happens. The voters have been decided whether this commission should be formed. July 8th, the day after which?
July 14th is the term. It's up to the third reading on July 14th.
Even better. Thank you. Laud director. July 14th. July 15th, if this receives eight votes, July 15th, persons can start gathering signatures to place names on the ballot. Obviously, this isn't just a free-for-all. Just whoever gets a write-in, their name's pre-printed on the ballot, there's petition process. You have to have 50 signatures in order to have your name on the ballot to be considered for this committee. We have the forms already in there. They've been annexed by reference into our ordinance. They're forms actually prescribed by the Secretary of State. This is one of them right here. So you can have groups of people, get their signatures all together in once, 50 signatures for a group of people, or you can have individuals. They need to be then turned in to the Board of Elections by August 6th, 2014. So they have from July 15th to August 6th. It's not a lot of time. Some of you may say, "Well, why is that?" Certainly not anything Joe and I did. It's due to the limitations that are imposed upon us within the Ohio Constitution. Yeah, and certainly, we could try to amend that, but good luck. After that, the names will be submitted, the voters will go to the polls, and they'll see two questions on the ballot in November 4th. Should we have a charter commission? Yes or no? Who should serve on the charter commission? Then you'll have the names of the people that turned in their petitions on the ballot. 15 people will be selected. Then they'll have one year.
15.
15 people.
Top 15 voters.
Top 15 voters. Then you will have one year, provided the voters say yes, the majority of the voters say yes, I think a charter commission should get down to work. One year for the charter commission to meet, do their due diligence, come back and propose their product. Come back and say, "Okay, here's what this charter commission, who is elected, think can or should do." Doesn't end there. It's not just whatever these 15 people define and stuff with. That final product goes to a vote for the people for approval or rejection. Only if a majority of the votes approve the work product of that charter commission is it actually put in place. This is a very counterintuitive process. There's some mechanics that go along with it. Every other city that has done this has done the same thing. It can't be changed, and the Ohio Constitution prescribes exactly how it's done. Now, questions come up quite a bit. Who is able to serve on this charter commission to actually help draft this huge document, this very, very fundamental document in the city of Canton? I think there's been some kind of misconceptions in the past. Certainly, any elected or any registered voter in the city of Canton is eligible to serve on this commission. But there is a 1971 Ohio Attorney General opinion that also adds some more information on top of that. Council members, you guys, we cannot be on the commission, though we'd love to. Mayor can be on the commission. The auditor can be on the commission. The law director can be on the commission. The treasurer can be on the commission. Director Bartosz can be on the commission. President Shulman can be on the commission. But council cannot. And it has to do with statutory interpretations. Now, hey Frank, I see the frustration on your face. This is what we've been dealing with every time we look at these statutory issues. Once we are over that hurdle, those statutory issues, which are completely bizarre, in some respects completely disappear when we put in this charter form of government. So, you know, people are probably saying, "Okay, that sounds great, it's very..." I don't want to say high level, because I don't get my own credit, but you know, broad picture. How does this affect us and what we're trying to do here in the city of Canton? And I want to actually read you a quote from a decision from Stark County Court of common pleas. "There is no question but that the ordinance in question would have been valid if the city of Canton had been a charter city and had the subject ordinance been authorized by such charter." This is one of our laws being struck down for one reason, and the only reason is because we don't have a charter. This was in 1963. I don't think it was authored by Fred Rybick. It was a kind of a small issue. It had to do with the maximum retirement ages of firefighters and police officers. Cities all across the country, federal government even, says if you reach a certain age and you're a firefighter or a police officer, you have to retire. We can't do that because that conflicts with civil service laws. And this decision in 1963 said, "Hey, I know everybody else is doing it in Canton, but you're not." And what's very ironic is 10 years later, after that decision was rendered, the city of Cleveland had the exact same ordinance, and the court said, "Looks great. Good job. Completely constitutional." So we are actually immaterially hindered by the types of laws that we can pass and what we can actually do. There's a law that we have in the books even today, and the reason why I bring this up is because, you know, we have $4.2 million, some of you may have seen my email, of federal funds that we have to spend in order to build houses, the NIP program, fantastic program. One of the contingencies in that program is that the city of Canton has to take ownership of the property before they do the demolition. Okay? So the next question is, what do you do with these properties once you have them? Certainly, I don't think we just want to mow all these vacant lots, we want to get rid of them. State law very specifically says what we can do when we dispose of property, municipal property. And it says, "You can put it to public bid, and it has to be advertised in newspaper for five years." Or five weeks, sorry. Yeah, it's heavy advertising. It has to be advertised for five weeks.
What's the cost to advertise that for five years?
More than a lot. So, there's some exceptions to that, and the exception that we're going to be relying on a lot is, okay, you can give it to the land bank. Otherwise, you can give it to the land bank. Otherwise, you have to get rid of it for fair market value. Now, we have a law that was generously provided to me by Director Williams that says, "Well, wait a minute. No, Canton, you guys can do a land bank or a side lot disposition program. Give it to the adjoining property owners, you can do that. It's hard to follow." This ordinance, to the extent that it says that, is unconstitutional, and it conflicts with the state law. And if we were to do that, and we were to sue, we would lose. So we can, we will, we can give it to the land bank and hope that the land bank modifies their policy, and I'm sure Lem would talk about this, that they'll be willing to take ownership of the property. We can hope that they expand their side lot program, because what if we wanted to give a property to somebody that's not a neighbor? If we had a charter, we could do whatever we want. If we had a charter, we could take this park, Northview Park, which Derek and I have been struggling with, split it between the neighbors, give it immediately to the adjoining property owners, not have to go through the land bank, done and done. Can't do it now. So when we talk about the types of changes that we would have with a charter, these are the types of smart changes that still keep in place the mechanisms that the people are used to and people want. Obviously, one of the changes I would suggest is we clean up how we can dispose of property under these circumstances. We would, I would like to see a provision that says if we want to have the people vote on an ordinance, traffic cameras is a great example. You know, people are passionate about traffic cameras, against it, in favor of it. It would have been fantastic. I think some of us actually wanted to do this, to take that ordinance, give it to the voters, let them decide whether traffic cameras should exist in your city. We can't do that right now. Charter cities do it all the time. You know, we had an ordinance actually pulled from our agenda tonight. It had to do with fire chiefs. It's a pretty benign issue. It just would have expanded the number of fire chiefs, battalion chiefs, from three to four. Now, there's, there were, in my view, legitimate reasons to want to do that. Because under the civil service laws, we are limited in who we can hire our fire chiefs from. That would have expanded the pool in the event, in the likely event, that Chief Richard retires. We have to do that by statutes. If we have a charter, like the city of Newark actually did, which I think is a really good charter, they got rid of that requirement because it makes sense. The fire chief or the police chief can come from anywhere in the state of Ohio, provided they meet the requirements that Newark has set for their fire chief. They don't have to go through the machinations that we have to go through just to make a civil policy decision. There's other things you can do with a charter. I mean, it's really unlimited. We can put in our charter, there has to be a set number of police officers for every resident, a 10-to-1 ratio, whatever. I don't think we should do that, but we could. You could put in campaign contribution limits. Well, I don't think a lot of people realize this, there are no campaign contribution limits in the city of Canton for any reason. When John has reelection, I could write him a check for $10,000, and that would be perfectly reasonable. Many cities do, and it's not going to happen. Many cities do put in campaign contribution limits in your charter. There's other things you can do with respect to spending, with respect to your tax mileage. Those are all statutory steps. We can adjust those, but the point is not to put out every menu item. That's not my job, that's the commission's job. But to try to demonstrate to you and articulate to you that it's very possible, and in fact very, very probable, that if this happens, we can do it in a smart way and in a way that allows for small, efficient changes without dramatically rewriting the city's government. You know, as a real-life example, the city of Newark, Ohio, just did this, and they did exactly what I described. So, I will then defer to Joe and make sure I discuss anything with our procedures, but not I will defer to... Is there any questions?
Thank you. Member Mack has done a great deal of research, and he shared it with you very concisely. I don't want to add much to it, I just want to hit the highlights of what this body is doing. In two weeks, you'll have your third and final reading. If 2/3 of you, if eight of you vote for it, it moves on. It goes to the Board of Elections for their election in November. If seven of you or fewer, it's dead in the water. The reason for these timelines all stems from the Constitution. There are very, very short paragraphs in the Ohio Constitution that govern this. We're not supposed to send this ordinance or pass it. There's a window, no more than 60 days, no less than 120 days. So we'll be within that window when this passes, before it hits the Board of Elections. Sometimes, these run concurrent with municipal elections. This is not a municipal election, but we're going to run it concurrent with the general election if it gets there to save money. I've worked with your chairman on that, Jeanette Millane, Debbie Dawson at the county prosecutor's office, a number of people have been looking at these issues. Your ordinance is quite simple. Essentially, it says that if you pass this, you approve submitting that question, the question being, "Shall a commission be chosen to frame a charter?", that question goes to the voters of the city of Canton in November. All that appears next to it is yes or no. If a majority of the people hit yes, then the Board of Elections looks to the names and chooses the largest 15 vote-getters to be the commission. This is a non-partisan election. You don't run as a Democrat or Republican, and as member Mack, Chairman Mack, said, you need 50 ballot signatures. And the forms have already been prescribed, as he pointed out by the Secretary of State. You can run as slates of 1, 2, 3, 4, 15. They can run individually. They can run as Mick Spruce. Our friend Mr. Gayton here is known as a Republican and has an interest in this. He could run with other folks, for example. Now, once that happens, again, if a majority picket, as was pointed out, the charter has a year to bring back, the charter commission has a year to bring back a charter. That charter is voted on either completely thumbs up or completely thumbs down. There's no line item veto. When that charter comes back, it has to be mailed to every voter in the city in book with form according to the Constitution. When it hits, the voters have a chance to study it, and when they go to vote on it, it's either up or down. No line item veto. Of the three or four cities in Stark County that have charters, the most recent one to get a charter was Canalfold. When we had some of these discussions some years back, some of their folks came over here. And the reason they think theirs passed on the first try fairly quickly was they kept it really close to what they had. I think it was almost identical to what they had. That was something the voters understood and could live with. Although, as Member Mack would recommend, I'm sure, and John Gautherman, who's the chief lawyer to the municipal league, and I would guess from the results I've seen, if you keep it close, the commission keeps it close to what the people have, they're more comfortable with it. This has been around since 1912. It was 1912 when the Ohio Constitution had a group that formed this section of the Constitution that gave the rights to cities to form charters. In 1913, Canton tried to fail. In 1921, Canton tried to fail. Four years later, on 1960, it tried to fail. The reason being, they wanted drastic changes to the choices they had. They wanted all that large council, for example, a couple of those times. So, if this is somewhat similar, the way the charter commission prepares for the future to do the kinds of fixing and tweaking that Chairman Mack has described, is they build in periodic review, every three years, for example, every five years, whatever the commission builds in, it will be revisited, and amendments can be put on to tweak those kinds of things that the city has found they need, that aren't provided in state law. So, again, this is short ordinance. There are only a few sections that aren't bullet point. If eight or more of you pass it, it goes to the board, and the forms are prescribed, and if these folks gather their signatures, they're getting the most time that we can give them, in the windows we have, they could be on the charter.
Thanks, Director. Member Doc.
Oh, good. So, mayor, and everybody up on the eighth floor, the president, and all that could be on the commission, they could formally approve and run. So they'll be making all the decisions whether or not the mayor is strong, or weak, whether or not we put together the treasurer and auditor's office, and we don't get a chance to make any decisions.
Well, I guess to answer your question, certainly, if I had mine, Robert, all of us would be on the charter commission, but I can't, we can't write state law. That's why we're here, even talking about this issue. But you're right. And so some of you may say, "Oh, my gosh, you know, the mayor and I got into an argument, you know, last week. What if he tries to..."
Not every day.
I get into arguments every day. I have talked to every single elected official in the city. They understand how this process can be done. It's not valuable if someone tries to increase their own power, try to change what we have. It's valuable when we have a product that us, who are in the wards, who interface with the voters every day, can go to their front door when we're running for reelection, and this is on the ballot at that time, and we say to those voters, "This makes sense." I mean, you have to consider this politically, you have to consider the totality of it, and politics certainly comes into it. I think we have certainly more to gain by having the people who have a fundamental understanding of our city being on that commission, having people like Allen, who's, I think, if I can sense, has agreed to be on the commission if this actually comes to fruition. I feel comfortable with him to agree. Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Well, that's what I'm saying.
Mr. Doc, what happened on this area was in 1971, the Ohio Attorney General was presented with this issue, and they did their research. And they found that the statute that governs all of you as members of council clearly says, "You cannot hold another public office." You cannot hold another public office. Now, there's some exceptions if they're ministerial.
Well, you can.
But I can, because there's not a statute that says I can't. Judges of common, please, can't hold another public office under some of the interpretations. But the opinion went on to say, "Because there is no statutory or constitutional prohibition for the auditor, treasurer, law director, mayor, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, they could be on this commission, and they could serve." And they went on to say, now, this might appear like a conflict, because they could be self-serving. They could look at...
Oh, that would never happen.
But here's how the attorney, here's how the attorney general and the courts dealt with that. What they wrote was this. "This is a temporary commission. It's a draft. It goes to the voters. The voters ultimately decide if the draft was good or not, not the people who framed it, the voters." So it's washed and cleansed by the voters. And the other thing they said was, and I thought this was interesting, they said, "And look at our own forefathers. We had 15 of the 37 signers of the Constitution later serve in the Congress of the United States. The very Congress that designed the shape and frame of the government of the United States, which framed it, served it." So, the AG said, "Yeah, there's that look of self-serving interest, but it's washed away essentially by the fact that it's a draft, and the voters ultimately give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down."
I don't like the risk factor, the gamble, that the commission will come back with the same agreement that we have now. I think it's a heck of a gamble, and I can't see, I can't see 15 people agreeing in a year. But anyway. The only thing I can say to you is that other cities certainly have that same concern. I don't vote that way. And Newark did exactly that, whatever you feel about it. But when we talk about, you know, the gamble and the risk of having it not come back the same, that's the way you have to do it. Because charters come in two pieces. They come like it came in Cape York County, where everyone goes to prison for fraud, and then it's completely different. Or it comes back the smart way, which is the way you do it now, which is you talk about who should be on that commission. You talk about what the expectations are. And then if they come back with something that's not appropriate, then we vote it down like we have in 1960, like we have in 1920. If there were a better way to do it, I would tell you what that better way is, but that's how we've done it. Go ahead.
Well, not everybody. The problem I have is, everybody should be running on themselves, not in groups and acts. You know, that, I promise that.
Well, on the ballot, there's not going to be...
You go out and get 15 people and get those votes.
Think of all the...
That happens.
I want to make sure I clear something up. They're not, they're not groups on the ballot. It's just names.
That's you, right. Essentially, you could campaign together, is that what you're saying? But you wouldn't show up on the ballot.
No, the ballot's...
Right. People will know. Member Art?
Yeah, I think, again, the key to this is the quality of the people that are going to run, that are going to be elected. A charter, to me, would be the best thing that could happen in this city if we get the right people that can be there for the right reasons. If you're there to consolidate, you know, the group's political power rather than to move this community forward into the 21st and 26th centuries, you know, it's a great thing. It's going to be the same old, same old. But that's just going to be if you know people that are interested in running, that can definitely are looking out for the best interest of the city and the city's future, encouraging the run. You know, people want to make a difference.
Member Shulman.
President. Well, I'm working with you. You've been around for a number of years, understand the fabric of the law locally and state, and I think an answer to Member Doc's concerns, which I certainly understand and share. Tell us, if you can, how many times the state law trumped something that we wanted to do? And I think the bottom line to this, to this idea, is do we want Columbus running our lives, or do we want to run our lives? That's really, I think, what Chairman Mack is indicating the purpose of a charter would be. So, Laud director, tell us about your experiences where there's been that friction between state law and local will that's been absolutely trampled by the state.
Thank you, President Shulman. That's a really well-framed question. What President Shulman's talking about, and what was mentioned earlier, is the concept of home rule. There's a section in the article of the Ohio Constitution that says all municipalities, whether charter or non-charter, are entitled to home rule, provided there are matters of local concern, local interest, police powers, that are not outside their corporate limits, and, this is the most important part, that are not in conflict with state law. They're not in conflict with state law. The test they evolved on that is, cities can't prohibit what states allow, nor vice versa. We can't forbid what states allow, and states can't forbid what we allow, as long as they don't speak to it. Again, if it's a matter of statewide interest, the state says it's uniformly applied. Now, getting back to your question, our first time that Canton went to the Ohio Supremes was about 50 years ago. Canton said, "We wanted to have local control over whether fluoride should go in our water supply. We want local control. We don't think it's such a good idea. The tests aren't all in yet." State said, "No, no, 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 no. You may think that's a matter of local police powers, local health, safety, and welfare, but we think it's a matter of statewide importance that has to be uniformly applied. So, no, go home, shut up, you're in conflict with general laws. You lose." Now, about 20 years ago, maybe less, Craig Chester and Bob Rubin went down on behalf of the city of Canton, the Ohio Supreme Court, and argued a case that we felt strongly about, about manufactured homes and certain code changes to them. We won. The court agreed that it was a matter of local concern if the state hadn't spoken directly to it. But I got to tell you this, since then, even Judge Hyatt, who's a judge in the Court of Appeals at Columbus, said, "Home rule's been gutted." I don't remember the exact quote he said, but his quote was pretty strong, and he said, "They've been picking at it so much, there's hardly anything left to home rule." So, as John Gautherman has said in some of his publications, and some of you have looked at, again, the lawyer who consults the Ohio Municipal League and the Ohio Lawyers Association, he has said, "It is true, the Constitution does not grant more power to a charter city than a non-charter city, but in areas where there's a close call, the courts almost always favor charter cities in terms of home rule if it is a matter of local interest, and they don't clearly speak to it on the general level." So we've been gutted, essentially, we being cities, in terms of home rule, and a charter would give us a slight edge.
Just a quick question on those two issues. Sorry.
Number one.
On those two issues, were we right in state law?
In what?
The fluoride and the...
Fluoride.
Uh, fluoride.
Well, Dennis, to tell you, the state was right, that you should put fluoride in your water. There are a lot of people saying, "No, it's such a good idea still."
And then now we're building green homes with manufactured homes.
Uh, but we won. We won that, and that was a good blow for local cities. I mean, but we're using it now. We're building green homes.
Well, and I think, this is something, you know, that happens all the time. If you, Joe's office, the only thing you have to worry about a conflict with are issues of whether you need a warrant, and our charter, as opposed to, well, not only do you have to look at the broader things like whether you need a warrant, but then you have to look at all these different mashed-up sections of statutory law. I don't want to speak for him, but being an attorney myself, I think the choice would be pretty clear. So are there any additional questions? Very good. Well, you know, and I would actually kind of end this with a quote. From Attorney John Gautherman, who really is the expert in private government, said, you know, "Statutory plans cities, which we are, would be better off if they adopt a charter, even if they don't change any part of their governmental structure." adopt a charter, even if they don't change any part of their governmental structure. Court decisions often, no, merely always treat municipal powers better if charter is involved. Besides, the people will control their government since they, not the general assembly, will make the final decisions on issues by way of a charter and the ability to amend the charter." And he ends it by saying, "Cities and villages who have not adopted a charter are missing out on the ability to have local authority." And so, as a body, we really are at a crossroads, we can change the city forever by giving our leaders the tools to modify our government to meet its current needs. We can do nothing and be paralyzed by fear of the unknown and just hope things are going to get better. To me, when I signed up for council, I didn't do this job just to hope things are going to change and hope things are going to get better, I did this to make a difference. I think this is the way we can, so thanks, everyone, for your attention on this issue.
All right, we're going to go through the...